Call meeting to order, we'll start by rising with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its formation under God, indivisible, free, and innocent for all.
Right? The first item on the agenda is the reorganization of the board. So I will ask for any nominations for the opposition chair.
I would like to make a nomination of Lee Gustafson for Chair of the Select Board.
Second?
Well, Arnie is the nomination, Ariana is the second to nominate Lee Dustin as Chair, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 The host.
Well, and before we go, Tim, this was handed to me about eight years ago. From John the Benedict, and I'm not sure if you're so sensitive to the public. For all the meetings to order, or how?
I'll just move a little further away from you.
Well, I wondered what's John.
At least it's not dynamite, like.
Right.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the honor, and I did want to recognize, Arnie, you've been in this chair seat since 2017. I'm here, so. And I appreciate your service and your willingness to take on that role. I think it's a critical function and one that you've handled very well, so.
Thank you, Lee.
You're here.
Here, here. So, um, I will accept nominations for Vice Chair.
Okay, I'm gonna nominate Ariana.
I nominate Arnie.
Okay, so we have Ariana nominated and Arnie Janinas. How do we move forward?
Is there a second to either nomination?
I, I, I don't even know if you're, you have to have a second on nominations, because you usually assume the person that's being nominated, if they accept it, is a second, but, you know, I.
It's only you should second yourself, so.
Yeah.
So if neither seconds themselves, then we're all set, we just won't have one.
Well, I, 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 I would accept a nomination for Vice Chair.
Okay. Uh, I would also accept a nomination for Vice Chair, but I don't have to, I've only got a one-term, so that's fine. Um, so I'll. I'd, I'll decline, I guess.
Okay.
Yep, you can do that.
So, um, honestly, that, not that I wouldn't want you to be the Vice Chair, but I think with Arnie having just stepped out of the chair role and being Vice Chair, makes more sense from my perspective, him being able to step into that.
It makes total sense.
If you're.
I thought you were looking to get out of it, that's all.
Okay, so we have a nomination of Arnie Janinas. Um, in the second, so all in favor of Arnie as Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. And then we also need a clerk, so I'm looking for volunteers or a nomination for the clerk of the board.
You could have that, see, Ariana, you can have the second runner-up spot, it's the clerk.
I, I've been the clerk for two years, and I don't think I've done it very well, so I'll take it again and see if I can figure it out this time.
Okay. Okay, so Ariana, um, has been nominated and seconded, um, so I'll accept the vote on her, all in favor, say aye.
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 Excellent, thank you, so.
You gotta remember, Tim up there too, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
Quietly in the background.
So the next item on the agenda is the adoption of rules procedure, we've gotten a draft rule, set of rules and the rules from last year, which apparently, according to Julie, has not been changed for this year. So I just wanted to see if there's any thoughts, um, maybe any changes to the rules of procedure for the select one.
They seem like they've been working good for all the years, originally we started with Roberts Rules of Orders, but that, that was a book about that thick, and I couldn't understand anything in there, when it finally changed to something a little more manageable, it made a lot more sense for a small board.
But I would like to discuss a couple of things about it, if we have the appetite.
Sure, go ahead, Tim.
Um, first, you know, when, when I was on the Planning Commission, Jim Carroll came in and did a training, I'm pretty sure this is where this came from, Jim Carroll did a training on, um, on procedure and conflict of interest and all that stuff, and one of the things that we talked about was, it's always on our agenda, is changes or additions to the agenda at the beginning. And when we talked about that then, he's, and maybe this is wrong, maybe I'm remembering this wrong, he said you can't add to the agenda at the time of the meeting, because in essence, you are then discussing an unworn topic. So as long as I've been on the board here for a year, we've never, that I can recall, added anything to the agenda, so I wonder, you know, what do you all think about that?
Are you asking that that get added? That, that, it's, are you saying that we should explicitly say that we cannot add things to the agenda?
I'm thinking we should just remove adding things to the, to the agenda based on what I was taught, now, maybe that's not right, and, you know, I don't think it's a big deal, but it makes sense to me that we wouldn't want to add anything to the agenda and talk about an unworn, you know, unworn topic.
So under agendas number three, it talks about that very point, but it's, you're right, it's not very specific relative to whether it's legal to add something to the agenda that hadn't been worn for 24 to 48 hours ahead of time, so. You know, Julie, do you have any thoughts on that?
I, 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 um, I have not been told that by Jim, because this is VLCT's model rules of procedure. Um, there were VLCT that put it in their model rules, and I'm assuming acceptable. Um, I'm happy to double check, and we can join the search of purpose to another meeting. Um, if you would like.
Well, there are things that you bring in often that we have to sign.
Correct.
That, you know, you haven't warned on the agenda, and they've just, you know, and they've just come up. So if you're saying, well, I found something we should have signed, then we have to have another meeting before we had another meeting, because it's not on the agenda. I don't quite see where that's helpful.
Yes, Hugh.
Uh, Hugh Quinn, yeah, I'll just come up to clarify, I think what Tim is saying, because I remember this conversation. And Julie, you may find it in, um, some previous documentation, but we had like somebody from, I think VLCT do an open meeting law review, and that's where I remember.
That's what it was.
The discussion about not adding something to an agenda, because you're basically, if you add something and make a decision about something, and it was not warned, then it's sort of violating the.
But this is VLCT's model policy.
Right, so.
No.
Yeah, so I think the open meeting law maybe is a place to look, just to see if there's something there.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, I, I think we should reach out to Jim or VLCT and just see what their thoughts are, and that, I mean, I could see doing deletions to the agenda or changes to the order of the agenda, but not necessarily adding business to be discussed. Okay. Anything else?
Um, one other thing that I wonder about is, does it make sense to add something? We still haven't gotten everybody used to the fact that they have to speak into a microphone because we're doing hybrid meetings, does it make, there's a section in there about the public and how they engage and, uh, with the board, and I wonder if it's worth adding something, or if it's just, maybe it's just too frivolous and nobody's ever gonna see if they're not. It's just a little frustrating when people are on Zoom and they can't hear what's being said.
So your, your point is that we should make a, uh, more of an effort to make sure everybody's speaking into microphones?
Yeah, maybe that's all we need, is just to be more diligent about it, that happened at town meeting.
You okay?
Yes, I hear you just fine.
Okay, because I'm just wondering what the dynamic range is of these microphones, whether we each need one. The other thing I was thinking of was having a floor stand for the mic, so that people don't have to come.
Yep.
Set up here, that might make it better.
Yeah, I've had comments from that, that people would prefer that.
But they not come to us.
Not come to us, well. Have, have like a podium where the mic.
Yep.
Or, or even just a free mic that you could pass around, but.
Right.
It's probably not worth adding to our rules or procedure, but I thought it might be an appropriate time to talk about it.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I had a couple, are you all set, Tim, do you have anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
Well, we reorganize every year, but we never say, uh, you know, that you're voted in for, it's just a term of one year, and we'll reorganize every year. We just reorganize every year. But that's not written.
Oh, should it be written in here?
Should it be written in here, that, you know, because you could have a board that just never reorganized.
Well, it does say, number one, says the body shall annually elect the Chair Vice Chair Secretary. So, right at the top. The one question that I had was number five under organization, where it says the motion only passive receives a vote to the majority of the total membership of the body, so if you have a quorum of three, I guess that would be a majority of the total membership of two, two people missing, rather than having it be the majority of the people there.
Right, and there are some motions that require the majority of the entire body regardless of who's present. And then there are some motions that are members present, that we determine.
I don't, I don't know that we need to, it just kind of jumped out of.
I, if we're going back to Jim about any clear, if we are going back on this, I'd love to know if there's a sentence somewhere that says motions like this require majority of the body, motions like this, majority of who's present. I mean, if we're, if we're asking other questions, I wouldn't add it if we weren't already.
It's the bond people that probably want all the motions.
Right.
Dude, I don't remember any of them being a majority of the, of all five.
There are some.
There's some that were four out of five, I thought.
There are some motions that you require.
Okay.
I want clarity.
The other, um, point that was made that was interesting to me, uh, was number seven under organization, where where one or more members attend a meeting electronically, a roll call vote is required for votes that are not announced. So that was just an interesting.
Yep.
Point that we should keep in mind, um. And then is this where we decide where and when we're gonna meet, not where, that one, we're gonna meet, so right now, um, our rules of procedure say we're gonna meet on the first and third Wednesdays of each month at 6:30 PM, does that work for everybody? Tim, does that work for you? Except for tonight?
It even works tonight, uh, I would be, I would be happy with six o'clock if that worked for everybody else, but if it doesn't, I'm fine with 6:30.
Six, six, 6:30 works better for me because of bond draws.
Okay.
That's usually what happens with the six, six o'clock, a little too early, 6:30 is fine.
Yeah, the only reason I say that is we've been there until 9:30 a couple of times recently, so.
Right.
But I'm fine with 6:30.
Okay.
I also, I appreciate 6:30 because I can finish my work day.
Okay, so we will, uh, keep the hours and days, as noted in the rules procedure, the first and third Wednesdays at 6:30 PM, I hear it now. Um, any other thoughts or comments on the rules of procedure? But we, we can't sign this now, because we're still asking.
You're welcome to ask any question.
Yeah, asking a few questions, so. Okay. Uh, next is any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Apparently, we can't add anything, but does anybody have any changes, any deletions to the agenda?
Maybe we delete number three.
Right. Okay, hearing none, uh, we will look at the approved, the minutes from the select board meeting dated February 19th, 2025.
Still moved?
So, um, Peter's a motion to approve the meeting minutes, so I have a second?
Second.
All right, and a second, any comments or changes, concerns?
I don't have anything.
Tim?
I have one minor edit on, let me see what page am I on, page six, line five, where it says Green Mountain Power provided a 4.3%, that should be 4.3 cents, as all the other references are.
Okay.
That's all I had.
So I also had a couple of, uh, questions, um, related to the solar field, one is on page four, line 27, and Tim, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the notes say that the system will continue to generate power past the 15-year life expectancy, I think that should be 25-year? Think that's what we had said, it's 15 more years, but it's total of 25 years, that year our election.
That would, yes, that would be more clear.
Okay.
We may, we may have said 15 years, but we were.
We meant 25.
Yes, we were, we were adding the 10 silently.
Well, it's 15 years left, so.
We should just add the word remaining. Add remaining in front of 15 years.
Hey, yeah, okay. And then on page six, uh, line 11, sorry, page five, line 11, uh, the last word should be silicon, not silicone.
Uh, good catch.
And that's the only, those are the only changes that I have. Okay, so we have a, uh, motion and a second, um, with some amendments. Are you guys all good that made the motions in a second with the amendments?
Yep.
Okay, if so, I'll, uh, ask for a vote to vote on the uh, select board meeting minutes dated February 19th, 2025, all in favor with the changes suggested, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. All right, uh, now is opportunity for citizens' comments, is there anyone here who would like to make a comment about something that is not on our agenda? Saying, shaking your heads, we will move on to old business, so Julie, would you like to take us through the old business?
Yeah. Um, so, uh, solar field, um, so first of all, everything, all bond articles passed last night, so the sewer projects and the purchase of the solar field and the purchase of the grader, um, and payment, so, um.
And I heard those passed.
They have.
They're wide-minded, yeah.
Yes, yes, they do. Um, and, uh, I also have to let you know that I received confirmation back from Greenbacker, that they did accept, uh, the reduction of purchase price by $50,000, so the purchase price went from 1.4 to 1.0 now. Um, it was reduced. Um, I have reached out to, uh, our attorney for the solar project, I will start, I meet with him next week, we will start the preparation with ENS, um, and, uh, that will come before we, to you guys before that gets out, so that, that'll be incoming in the interview. Um, the, uh, carport, uh, today I received back the signed indemnification agreement, uh, from the carport company, so, um, I'm not expecting any issues, uh, with coverage, uh, but the indemnification agreement was their agreement to cover everything. Um, so that came back today, uh, so that carport will be taken down, I would imagine in the next year.
So they cover everything, they've taken it down and.
They're taking it down, they will reimburse us for cruiser damage, our insurance company is going up then anyway, but, and then the, uh, the, um, uh, police officer whose personal vehicle was under death, we will make it. So, they had verbally told me they would do that, but I wanted to be there.
Nice, well, that's.
I'm really glad to hear that that's where we are.
Absolutely. Um, so that came back today, um, Yankee Magazine came out, um, today there is an issue in Yankee Magazine, there's a, a story in Yankee Magazine of our stone village. Um, they came, I don't know, maybe you have more on this, but they came, um, was in the spring, um, and did a tour of the Stone Village, met with John Clark and some members of the historical society, did a tour of the Stone Village and, uh, buildings, and, uh, for this submission of Yankee Magazine, so that popped, that's kind of a cool little thing to do. And then, um, I had had, uh, over the past couple of weeks, have had several people reach out and ask me about, uh, you know, nervousness about, um, impacted federal funds, and what does that impact have to the town? So I figured I would put it out in a public meeting, so, you know, um, anybody listening, thank you. So, um, currently we're not anticipating, uh, really any impact to Chester for federal funds. Where future impact would come in would be likely with any form of future federal grants. The grants that we have now, um, we have granted revenues in place, they're far enough in place that they won't be clawed back, um, and I keep reimbursements pretty up to date, um, so the, the, the the potential of us having federal dollars expended and not reimbursable, um, extremely, so. Um, I also keep in staying in contact with our granting agencies that we work with as well. So where we would likely see impact, depending on what happens in Washington, would be future grant funding opportunities. Um, so, as far as state dollars that come to us, um, certainly, the state receives a large amount of federal funds. Our, uh, where we receive state funds for our operational budget is in our state aid highway, but those currently are state-raised dollars, they're not federal-raised dollars. So we should not see an impact to that. That might change if all of a sudden the state loses its funding and re-out, re-figures out how their state distribution is going, then you know, that could change, but there's nothing on the immediate horizon that says to me that we will all of a sudden not receive election money because of anything that's happening. Um, so, uh, speaking of that, we'll move on to the flood funding, um, so we have been pretty much fully funded from FEMA at this point. Um, we have the dam project that is still out and which we can talk, which I'll talk about next, um, we have one other project, um, that I forgot when I, when I did this memo, we have one other project, uh, that deals with Christmas Tree Road and, um, of course, we can get Christmas Tree Road. And, um, there is a culvert that we had put in, it was a temporary fix. Um, it does not meet codes and standards, so therefore we are eligible to upgrade to codes and standards with FEMA paying for it. Um, so that project is still there, um, we're just waiting on, um, the final results of the H H. Um, so, that is the other project, so we've expended at this point about $3 million, roughly $3 million. Um, as I had explained at town meeting Monday night, the weight of the refunding of the flood disaster work, Chester's responsibility of that is 2.2%, uh, so of our $3 million, Chester's responsibility will be about $78,000, um, which at this point we have covered through, um, when we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed our equipment, uh, at, at a pretty high equipment rate, and that is enough to pay the $78,000, so, uh, taxpayers should not see, local taxpayers should not see a debt, actually, local taxpayer.
So, I was gonna say, how are we paying for, or where's the money coming from, $3 million?
So you signed your current, those current expense notes?
That's what they.
That's what that did, that, that bridged us, and then as we reimburse, I get reimbursements from FEMA, we pay that current expense.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted.
How is, how is that reimbursement coming?
We are almost fully funded, we have the dam project, and.
All the rest of the $3 million, almost all of it is, is from taxpayer?
It's back, it's come back, it's come back in the last two.
So, so there's a, there's a culvert on Murdoch Road that's four feet shorter, and it's a big culvert.
That's one of the Florida six million projects.
They're gonna fix that one, okay.
Um, and.
You're talking about the dam?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do one for you, maybe. Um, the, so the dam, we have retained Placid O'Neill um, to do, um, an evaluation of the spillway and the dam infrastructure itself. Um, one of the reasons we're at this level is because there was damage, we know that the spillway is undersized, we've known that for a long time. Um, but there was additional damage to the spillway during the event. Um, so the engineering firm, when they do that evaluation, will be able to evaluate the equit dollars of how much of that was classified, but, um, that can get reimbursed. The other thing that they will evaluate is, certainly know this building has to be upsized, how does that happen, can it happen? Um, I think it's gonna be a bigger project than perhaps what people might realize. Um, so the, the FEMA project will pay for all of the engineering, which was about $88,000, so we will not have to pay that. Um, Placid O'Neill will, um, give us an opinion, and they will give us, um, projection for costs um, of, of, of fixing the way we can, whatever they feel is gonna be necessary, and then, so I would anticipate a conversation coming some point in 2025 about what we're gonna do to the dam, because certainly upgrades and improvements to the dam beyond what was caused by the flood does not need to cover that, meaning the taxpayers, and I think that that's probably gonna be a higher number than we thought, but we'll have that conversation. I just want people aware.
So the dam is, is the water and sewer department's property, right?
It is the water department.
Is it gonna fall back on the town, or is it gonna go with the water department?
That would have to be in the way of discussion. With one more, yeah. Um, so, again, we'll have that discussion, it would not be a decision that I would want to make on my own, certainly, it's, um, it's not used for water, uh, it's, it's not a backup reservoir anymore, it's recreation, but it's a recreation site um, that's near and dear to a lot of people in our community, so. But how many dollars do you cut it out, I don't, I don't know. Um, so I think that is my whole thing. Biggest.
Any other old business that, you know, we've got it on? Thank you, Julie, for that. Uh, next on our agenda is short-term rental update, and I believe we have the members of the town here to discuss that, you guys wanna?
Yeah.
You can take the microphone out of the stand and sit back down with it if you'd like, all right? It's all good, that's all good.
Um, so tell us who you are.
Um, I'm Hugh Quinn.
Thank you.
I'll just start with the numbers, and then whatever discussion that ensues will be fine. So at the tail end of last year, or in the fall, we hit sort of a maximum number of short-term rentals of 70, um, but the short-term rental renewal deadline to get your 2025 registration was January 1st, uh, we gave folks a grace period, so we're giving them a little bit of runway beyond January 1st to re-register if they want, and so as a result of going through the registration process, which is coming to an end, we're currently at 64 short-term rentals. Uh, we've got four people on the waiting list, uh, only three of which are eligible, because one of the persons on the waiting list has not yet owned the house for a year, so they're still, they're on the list, but they can't register. Um, and so because we're sort of winding down the renewal process, my guess would be, when it's all said and done, probably have about 60 uh, short-term rentals. Um, if I take three out of the four off the waiting list, that brings it up to 63. And there will be possibly some additional turnover, because there's currently nine short-term rentals for sale. So if those houses sell, they, they're gonna create some slots. So that's the, the numbers.
Our, our, what is our stated cap in the ordinance?
65.
That's what I thought, okay.
So what's the general attitude of people who are applying for these permits, getting or board on the street?
Um, honestly, so far, the folks that have gone on the waiting list have called, and we've had to say, we're at the cap, we can put you on the waiting list, they don't seem to be very upset about that, for the four or five people I've called, some folks have just, um, you know, they're not quite ready, they're still working on the house, or they're just, they just wanna, a lot of people that are going on the waiting list, they've seen the ordinance, they know there's a cap, not necessarily ready to rent this minute, but they wanna get in the queue. So I guess I would say, summarize that, I'm not getting a lot of hate yet, for people that say, I can't leave, I can't short-term rent my property. Um, but.
We did get a letter on, uh, as a board, from that one gentleman on Cummings Road, I believe it was, that was trying to get on to, uh, to do a short-term rental there, and he said that we were at our cap, and he couldn't get on, I don't know.
Yeah, no, he can't, and he was the one, I think, uh, I'm, I'm kind of remembering vaguely the conversation about that, there, yeah, there are some people that basically feel that any kind of cap that would prevent short-term rentals is bad for them and bad for the town. Bad for them and bad for the town. So get a little bit of that.
But it sounds, if I, following your math, it sounds like our sixty five cap is, seems accurate and appropriate, seems to be where we're living. If what you just described, sounds like we would be able to. Actually address people who are on the waiting list and still be under sixty five.
Uh, we would be right about, we'd be one or two under the cap. So if you thought you wanted any wiggle room, there wouldn't be any, but, um. Unless of course these houses that sell, sell.
Right.
You know, well, since sitting at the housing commission meeting through the polling.
There was an awful lot of hate of short term rentals at all. That was, that was, was none.
Which would reinforce the impulse to keep the cap where it is.
Yeah, we keep the cap where it is.
So what did that sound like, Peter?
Well, it all depends. Some of it was some real, some that was pretty authoritative, you know?
But the general consensus was, we don't think short term rentals is a good idea.
The people, the people who are no were vocal and then there were, you know, people didn't say, but the no's were really vocal.
But again, this is, Peter was sitting at a table talking about affordable housing on the document. It, it addresses the fact that STRs are a piece of that puzzle.
Right.
So he was inviting comment. It's not like.
No, I, I was just wondering how adamant or vehement people are in opposition to short term rental or if it was just. Uh, the, the sample size and the sample was a little bit skewed.
Well, you got to decide. I was there from ten till six.
Well, and I think the housing, you know, the housing, um. Uh, open house that we're having on the team. It's certainly based on that conversation as well.
Yep.
I mean, it's part of the same conversation that we had when we did the short term rentals. We're trying to reach a compromise in between a lot of the people that were opposed about any regulation. And then, and having stricter regulations. So I thought we had a nice balance in, in there. And that number, we do have a little room to play around with if we ever want to bump it up a little bit. If we start getting a lot of more demand, but. Seems like it's working pretty well the way we saw.
Right.
Yeah, I'll just add that it's very.
You are, sir?
Oh, Preston Bristow, sorry. Um, it is widely said in affordable housing circles that short term rentals. Rob us of long term rentals. And. I kind of say yes, but because I think a lot of these short term rentals would not become long term rentals if we denied them. But when I say yes, but, uh, there's no, uh, I think there's no denying the fact that. If you can, if you're someone from out of state and you can buy a house and help finance buying it by renting it. Then maybe the price is higher because it has a commercial value. So I, I do think that, um. There are some real effects that having short term models have. And it is also widely said, although it's not empirical, it's just kind of, uh. People just guessing that they say that, because the letter that we got from Tim Crosby said, well, this is bringing economic benefit to the town. Well, if the person getting the rent doesn't live in town and the people renting. Go to Ochemo, we're not getting too much benefit. So, uh, that's kind of the dynamic. The other thing I will just say to have in your mind, I don't wanna have. A lot of discussion on this, but. Right now our cap is just both hosted and unhosted, kind of thrown in together. And a few people have said, well, gee, it would be kinda nice if we could limit the hosted, but not the unhosted. Okay, you're, you're limit the unho, you, you are absolutely right about the opposite. And. So one, but you can't discriminate.
I was gonna say, didn't we address this originally?
Well, there's been one trick that hasn't been challenged in the courts yet would be to say, and I'm just being hypothetical. To say that there's a cap of fifty for both hosted and unhosted each. And then they're treated equally, but we all know that there's less hosted.
I see.
Um, so it's, it's something that you could think about if that comes up. I mean, it's, it's somewhat of a lengthy process to amend it and, and I don't know if, but, but I. It just is, uh, seems to me intriguing, put it that way.
Yeah, so just kinda add a little bit of information for that, just so you know, the breakdown right now is forty five unhosted and nineteen hosted. Oh, wow.
That's actually better than I thought it would be. That's more hosted than I thought.
So just to add to the. Discussion. And I wanted to ask you guys, as the ones who are administering this program, how's it looking from your viewpoint?
In terms of trends or, or just?
Just, just day to day, sitting behind your desk. Is it a huge pain or is it working all okay?
No, I mean, I think there was, and Preston will know more than I about this, but there was the initial pain of onboarding everybody that wanted to short term rent. But now that that pain is over, sort of the day to day management of people coming and going. Um, and sort of the monitoring we do with the software we have. It's not really much work. I mean, it's work, but, uh.
But it's not taken in, in order?
No, absolutely not.
Is that software still in place that we originally, uh, signed up on that they, that we use for monitoring all what's going on?
Well, I mean, you probably all remember, we had a bad experience with one contractor. We got rid of him. The new company that we're using has been excellent. We're still, we're still using them. And, and they're not very expensive. And I was fearful when we had a cap at a waiting list that we might. Preston Bristow again, that we might get some people saying, I'm not gonna, you know. Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna do it. That. I guess it's just our winsome nature. We kind of talk people off the ledge and we, it, it, that hasn't happened yet. That's all I can say. Because in other words, an enforcement action, which is just, yeah.
Tim, did you have anything you wanted to chime in on?
No, I'm content with where things stand right now with the, with this discussion and feedback. Thank you, uh, Preston and you.
No sound. So I turned when I was hoping it was gonna get louder.
Okay, um, any other questions for these gentlemen? Anything else you guys wanna say?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, don't go too far away. Next on our agenda is a discussion regarding the, uh, direction to the planning commission on the quarries slash earth extraction. So. Um, we had in a previous meeting talked about, um. Or had some discussions rel- relative to quarrying and earth extraction activities as it relates to. The zoning ordinances. And so we were just. Wondering if you guys had any thoughts on the direction that we gave you or anything that we needed to discuss.
I believe we haven't actually given direction at the moment and that that's what we're doing now. Is that?
Well, actually, so I don't know that we can give direction because the planning commission is its own entity. We can ask questions.
Um, unfortunately, I had some notes which I left in my car, uh, on specifically this topic. Uh. What I was hoping we as a body would discuss with our planning and zoning team is that we would like to be in a position to. Better evaluate the questions regarding quarries and earth processing. And to ask their, this team if they could. Provide us with some background and some understanding to better educate us on how to make decisions. As opposed to saying to them, to the team, like, could you do X, Y, Z? But just to say, what we need to do is be able to evaluate if there are differences in the components that have been combined. So we'd like to look at that and explore it. And then what are those definitions? Where can it be done? And sort of what is the current business model? Um, what I was, the reason I took notes, one of the things I've been thinking about regarding this issue is. It's a concern where we quarry, the impact it has on our neighbors. At the same time, a lot of us have spent a great deal of energy talking about how do we invite industry into town? What businesses are successful? What does it look like to be a business in Chester? And what businesses do we need? So what I'm hoping. You guys might be able to help us with, if you guys agree, is help us understand the business of. Gravel quarrying and earth processing, how it integrates in Chester. So that we can better determine how, where it belongs. That was a lot of words without a prescription to you.
So Palmer, are you here to talk about this or? Okay.
Here, listen.
Um, and I, I wanna make sure, so I just said a lot because I've been thinking about this nonstop since the day we had that last meeting. So now I've. Put it up.
So, so for me, if you just go to the agency of natural resources site and you can actually click on quarries and it will show you. Couple dozen in Chester that have been around. And there's a difference, I think. First off, the big difference is you can say, cause we have a quarry that does a hundred yards a year. That's very different from having a big commercial where you're taking it out. There's a big difference between, uh, gravel bank. Where you're taking gravel out with a loader and where you're blasting the ledge out. And that's, there's a noise level is astronomically different. And, and the thing is, is the way that it got written up. When we talked about it in the planning board meeting, that, and they penned the agenda, they put. You know, so you put absolutely everything in there, but the thing is there's like an A, B and C to it. You know, if you're a guy, there are places in this town where ledge falls off and you can load it in your pickup truck. It's completely different. From you're gonna bring a big air track and you're gonna be blasting every other week. That's their, they're, uh, somehow you have to be able to like to keep the business in here. The guy who is bringing out football ball artisan stone, because the glimmer stone is something that's very important. It can be done in a small quantity. As opposed to you're gonna do a hard rock quarry, which is completely different. But on that hand, as I say that, there was a mining district in Chester that didn't bother anybody in particular. And there's a ton of overburden that's still up at the mine because what you're after was the talc. And one of the things that you do is you throw away all the granite. And there's like, there's. Couple hundred thousand yards. That are there and that's in a part of town where, you know, it doesn't bother anybody.
So I think what I'm trying to express is you have extensive knowledge and understanding of the industry. I don't, and the five of us are expected to make some of these decisions. So what, what I'm looking for or what I think we were, what I was asking for when we brought it up three or four meetings ago. Is to take away the very specific anecdotes of a very specific place. And let's talk about what is this industry and what is our town? How do they fit together? And then everything you just said will make a heck of a lot more sense. But you're giving us specific anecdotes for specific places. I wanna understand the business, the industry and our responsibility as a municipality. And then go back to the, well, in this section, we've got this.
Well, the responsibility is, is or is written up because it's the procedure right there. You have a noise procedure. You have all the criteria that you have to hit. To have any business model in the town.
Understood.
So I, I guess that's the, where I was coming down on this is. In my mind, there's a huge difference between quarry, which in my mind is hard rock.
Yep.
Versus gravel extraction.
Right.
Because a quarry like, as you, uh, related earlier, there's an awful lot of noise related to actually getting the stone. Free, ready to move around, whereas earth movement, gravel extraction is a couple of small machines that don't make a ton of noise. And I don't know if it's worth us pontificating as a select board to you guys representing the planning commission. As to what we'd like you to do, but just to ask the question. In line with what Ariana was asking is how do we, um, look at these processes from a thirty thousand foot as a town? Um, not necessarily location specific, but how do we implement some, uh, reasonable. Um, procedures or policies or zoning ordinances to deal with. The whole aspect. And before we start, Armor has a.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, it's a Palmer, you need to identify yourself and then.
Armor Goodrich. I just would like. For you to consider that in all this, that. Gravel and sand deposits are far too between in this state in our area.
Right.
There's ledge everywhere. And. We have, over the years, come about to be able to make products out of our ledge. To take over the loss of the sand. Uh, yes, it's more expensive, but it's there and it's a product that the towns and state. Will need forever and ever. And I think a lot more consideration needs to be taken there on the local and state level. That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Because it is, it's, it's important, very, very.
Yeah.
Um, and. Look what the town pays for sand and gravel now. And it, it's, it's going away. It's going away. So.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
You know, when I was looking at some of the, uh. Ordinances regarding the gravel, things like that, a lot of it seems like it's hinged on the definitions that you have about quarrying or manufacturing and stuff like that. So they're pretty general and they're pretty open as far as, you know, how they, how they're worded and what they say, which I think is actually a good thing. Because then when it does get further down the line, when it's allowed, it's the conditional uses that come into play to. To maybe make stipulations on what you can or can't do. But it leaves the door open being more general to have more options to come into play when you finally do make decisions. I guess you could take it and define things a little more precise about what type of quarry it is, whether it's drilling and blasting or whether it's scraping the banks. And all that. But I don't know if that's really something that's necessary at this point. I just think that with the general terms of what they are, we're allowed a little more leeway and a little more flexibility. To approve something that might work, even though it might be, you know, not specific to a, to a definition that we have.
Yeah, so let me address that a little bit because I think it's relevant. So, uh, I think in the discussions we've had so far. We've spent time, you know, looking at. Where extraction operations can be done in town, what zones, and we looked at the definition of what we call extraction operations, which is fine. And I think that stuff is at the appropriate level of detail. One thing that we have not talked about, but is in our bylaws. Is we have a whole set of what are called. Um, stamp, like general use standards. So there's a whole section on extraction operations. That go into much more detail about what it means and how it can be done. And what latitude the DRB has when they're doing a conditional use review. With respect to each. Individual application. So there really was some. Because our general use standards are titled under extraction operations and they, they talk about. Hard quarrying and gravel operations and all kinds of things and give almost two pages of. Guidance for the DRB to make a, um. You know, a thoughtful decision when an application comes before them. I feel like that's appropriate for it to be. In those standards rather than burned into the definition. Um, if there's, you know, and because we've had many discussions about, you know, a particular quarry and a bad actor and all these other things. The bottom line is. All those, that particular quarry was an operation long before any of these standards were in place. So if a new application. For any extraction operation were to, were to. Come to the DRB today as a new operation, they would, they would be. You know, subject to all of the requirements that we've now got documented. So I feel like. You don't wanna look at what we have on the ground today and say, you know, it's complete mayhem. From a quarrying perspective in Chester, there's no rules, there's no regulations. We don't have, it's out of control. I would say that's not true. It may be the case with one quarry and one bad actor that got its ability to operate. You know, back in a time when maybe we didn't have some, some good regulations. So I feel like what we have is appropriate, but I'm not against, um. And, and I feel like if, um. If anybody in the quarrying business community or, um. Citizens that are concerned about it can certainly come to the planning commission and. And articulate. You know, a problem they need solved or something they need to be, that we need to work on and we could, we could do that. Or, or like, you know, if you guys decide. Or, or like, you know, if you guys decide you just want an informational update at another level of detail. Happy to do that, so.
Let's go back to Ariana's question. So if I look at that and I think about your question. There is really no, Palmer can correct me, that is doing a gravel extraction operation here in Chester fairly well. You have a couple of small quarries that are operating now that are small guys doing a little bit. We have the bad actor. You know, um, you have, there's one that's going out to graph them. It's a little bigger and I haven't heard anybody complaining about that one.
Well, maybe that is, maybe that is something, it may just be that I need to educate myself. And if that, if we don't need anything as a select board.
No, we kind of need gravel. That's what we're.
I agree. So, you know, perhaps that's. Perhaps that's where we are. There's not a clear. If there's not a feeling from us as a body that anything needs to be. Looked at or addressed. Then I, then there's a feeling for me that I need to educate myself and, and. Get a better understanding. And, and then I'll just do that on my own.
I think part of why we're, where we are today is because when we were having the discussion about the. Bylaws and the final vote that we took on that, there were. Members of the community who expressed concerns about. The bylaws and what the implications of those bylaws would be on their specific lives.
Yep.
And. Um, I asked for clarification from you as to. What are the bylaws required at this point and would this be a problem? And the answer that I got was no, because of what you just explained relative to the general procedures and guidelines and all that. So. I'm comfortable. With where we are today relative to the bylaws. Relative to the quarrying extra gravel extraction type thing. And I think. Um. Getting a periodic update or hearing. Of uh, issues that we're having because we're not able to get the materials we need or whatever the problems are. Um, having those discussions down the line and, and I'm. I'm open to and hoping that we can get periodic updates from the planning commission relative to this whole. Um. Discussion that we're having today. And I'm, I think. That would help educate me and you just.
Maybe I'll invite you out for a cup of coffee and I'll learn more that way. So I, I mean, if that's where we are, that's, that's, that's fine. If, if there's not an issue on the table for us.
How did this start? Farmer Goodrich, how did this come up? How did this start on questioning? Uh. Review of this, I guess.
So when we did the bylaws, as, as the planning commission came to us with bylaw updates, citizens expressed some concern that, that. Uh, earth process, I'm gonna use the wrong word, I apologize, process, earth processing, generally the industry was allowed in the residential districts. And so there was concern from residents that all of a sudden quarries were gonna pop up in everybody's back garden. And so.
They haven't.
Exactly.
Been applied for, correct?
Yeah, and so we respond and, and I personally responded as I don't know enough about this business. I only know about one quarry and it's the only one I've heard about for two years. I need to learn more.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. And so I felt that we, I was concerned. That we might not have the most information in order to respond to citizens' concerns.
I see.
Because if, if my knowledge is one quarry, then how I react is not going to be appropriate.
Was kind of a, a review of, of, you know, are, do we have what we need to protect? Or not protect.
And the second part of that, I want to be very clear and on the record, um, there is. Loads of discussion about how can Chester better support its business residents and how can we encourage more business and how can we keep that up? So I want to be very clear. My inquiries have to do with how can we learn how to support the businesses that exist? Potentially even invite more if that's appropriate. How can we respond to that question? If somebody is lining up to open a new business in Chester and they're a quarry, do we just automatically say no? So that's a whole lot of talking from me personally about why I keep bringing this issue up. Cause I feel like we need to know more so we can answer, we can support your business.
That's great.
And support the residents who are scared.
Absolutely.
So that's really.
Yeah.
And at the end of that meeting. Um. Because it was getting lengthy.
Yeah.
Already had kind of ended it and said, let's, let's talk about this at another meeting.
And this is the other meeting.
Just circling back to that. Whether it needed discussion or not, it's that was stated in the. Cause it was a long meeting with a lot of words.
Yeah, and I'm grabbing. And I'm grabbing the mic because I'm the one who keeps bringing it up. So these guys know more than I do, so I'll just go do it on my.
And part of it was like, we, we keep going back to it. That bad apple brought out all the citizens and brought out the board.
That's what happens. Oh sure, absolutely. People started asking questions and. You know, looking at the bylaws and yeah, so I, I'm sure and I don't.
Tim, go ahead.
So to me, you know, I, I tend to try to bottom line things. I think there are. The, the concerns, I don't want to say fears, although maybe for some it is a fear. That somebody's gonna open a quarry that's adjacent to their home. And they're not gonna have any control over what happens there. And, and so what are they worried about? They're worried about noise. Obviously, that's been the prob, the biggest problem from the bad actor. Uh, truck traffic. Which um, has also been an issue there and maybe, you know, potentially some kind of seismic disturbance. And it seems to me like what has led to all this concern is really more about enforcement. Than it has been about permitting. And I wasn't involved in, I wasn't on the board when, when the enforcement began against the bad actor quarry. But as I recall from attending some of those meetings. The town felt like we had our hands tied on, on doing some of that enforcement. So maybe that's another piece of this that, that could be explored, like what could we do? Or what could we ask the legislature to do to give us more strength in enforcing? The conditional use um, parameters that we set up if we do, if and when we do permit another quarry.
Yeah, so Tim, just to respond to that, and I think that's probably, you know, the thing that people need to keep in mind. Um, just about everything that you said that might bother a neighbor with respect to issuing a conditional use permit. For a quarry today. Is one of the things that the DRB gets to consider. So the DRB can't put arbitrary conditions. On a conditional use permit. They have to follow the bylaws. The bylaws give them the latitude to create conditions or, or not. So you've heard things like, you know, you're not gonna find, there's no such thing as not in my backyard. The DRB is not allowed to basically reject something just because a neighbor doesn't like it. But there are plenty of um, criteria in our bylaws that the DRB can use. If they were evaluating a new application for a quarry, that would address many of the things that Tim just mentioned that citizens tend to care about, so.
That were not in place.
They were not in place when the other quarries went into operation.
Well, and but some of the, some of the things that were in place, the Act two fifty permit, which was, had nothing to do with the town as far as I know. Um, the enforcement action on that was extremely delayed and. From my perspective, very weak. And that's part of what has led to the deep concerns that we're hearing now from some of the folks in that area of town where they've had to put up with that.
Hey, any other thoughts or comments on this? Uh, I appreciate all you guys, Palmer and. You and Preston weighing in on this. Appreciate it. Alright, uh, moving very along, next is. The resolution regarding. Thank you, Palmer. The Vermont rail plan midpoint.
Ted railroad.
Yeah. No secret to you folks that I follow rail issues with great interest.
And you.
I do have. Oh, I am Preston Bristow, the town planner and zoning administrator. So I have a little show for you. And the, the thought is that add a little bit of interest to your meeting. So anyway. This uh. This first slide is something, my daughter is a professional graphic designer. So this did not cost the town of Chester anything. We just put it together for fun. And we haven't really used it as any promotion yet, but we created a logo for something called the Rutland Flyer. And this inspiration. So um, Sue, if you could go to the next slide. We also. Put together a map, uh, our own. Scutney Regional Commission um. Did the first pass on it and then the Rutland Regional Commission, which has a little more. You know, skills in mapping, uh, did, did the final version. So again, this map did not cost the town of Chester anything and it just lays out. I have copies of it that, uh, you, you know, if you want, um. It kind of lays out what the existing rail is in this area and some of the routes that are at various levels of proposal in this area. And of course, it also has this, this idea of. Uh, of, of actually having passenger service on this rail line that passes through town. So Sue, the next slide. Uh, for those, I think you all are pretty familiar with this rail line, but I just thought I would. Put up a map. It, it goes from Bellows Falls to Rutland and passes through Chester. Picture on the right is just a historic uh. Passenger, that's a tourist train along the Connecticut River heading into uh, Bellows Falls. Um, the next slide. Uh, we all like historic pictures. This is Bellows Falls. On the right is the Central Vermont's Ambassador, which was a train that went from New York City up to White River Junction. And on the left is the Green Mountain Railroad's, I mean, the Rutland Railroad's Green Mountain Flyer, which was, came out of Boston. Sadly, the track from Boston to Bellows Falls is gone. Uh, and they met uh, in Bellows Falls and exchanged passengers. Um, and of course, the, that one would head to Rutland. So there's a picture of our station, Chester. Um, this, this photo was shown in many historic settings. It's not a particularly clear photo. But it's very dramatic and uh, kind of fun. Next slide. A lot of people. Either don't know or have not, or forgotten that there was something called Steamtown USA in Bellows Falls. They came into business in nineteen sixty-six and went to nineteen eighty-three. Uh, sadly, the guy who founded it, who had the money, Nelson Blunt, uh, also had a private plane and he crashed it and died. And his family wasn't interested in carrying on the tradition. So it ended up getting relocated to Scranton, Pennsylvania and being taken over by the National Park Service. But if you see in the next slide. That resulted in some interesting trains in the Chester area. This particular one I, I picked because uh. I, I also have a involvement with the Long Trail and Appalachian Trail. The sign that just to the left of the train is the. The trail signs at crossings in Shrewsbury. Uh, they wrote on fellow with the stop sign. The best we can speculate, because the Rutland Railroad had gone bankrupt, the state had bought the tracks, but we, we think the signals weren't working and so he. Stood in the road, which is allowed under railroad regulations and then let the train cross. Anyway, next slide. Uh, I said Steamtown started in nineteen sixty-six. This is Chester, as you can see. Uh, looking by the car, I think that's pretty close to nineteen sixty-six, but that's a, a steam train from Steamtown in Chester. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. As you know, we uh, we did succeed. Uh, I mean, I have to give the uh, Okemo Valley Chamber of Commerce the credit. They're the ones that went out on a limb and did the contract with the railroad and got the insurance. But we did succeed in having a holiday train here this year, which was um. Uh, I was very excited about and uh, this particular photo was a staged shot, which while you don't see any, yeah, there you go. That's a picture. Yeah, yeah. Yes, that was uh. Um. Ariana took that photo. Yeah. She was on the train. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um. He, interesting little side fact, I, I don't think they'd do this today, but the Montrealer, the, they had troubles with Vermont Central. And some repair work and they routed it through uh, Chester back in nineteen eighty-three. Isn't that something? So we actually have had an Amtrak train come through town. I think it happened on two days. This is another little artifact. Uh, the Okemo Resort at one time got the bright idea of having a ski train and they uh. Persuaded the Green Mountain Railroad to buy two of these so-called Bud RDCs, rail diesel cars, they're self-propelled. Um. They never implemented it because they just couldn't, they had too many mechanical issues. But that's it sitting in, in Bellows Falls. This is Bellows Falls today, um. There is federal money, which I believe is, uh, as Julie said, committed and can't be clawed back to replace that platform. You can see it's pretty tired. Um, but that's the uh, that's the remoter. So next slide, please. A Ludlow does not have a station. Uh, well, they kind of have a station, but it's all boarded up and unusable. And also the site of the Ludlow Station is too small, so. There was a group from Norwich University that. Came up with several designs in twenty twenty-two, um. So proposed sites being Jackson Gore Pond Street and Whittleak Road. I think the blue parking lot outlet at Whittleak Road is probably the only really feasible one, to be honest. So, but at least I'll say that when Ludlow doesn't have a station, that means that they use our station, so that's entirely a bad thing. I told you, this is a whimsy of mine. I told you that I have a, a background in hiking as well and. Um, this is an Appalachian Trail statement, a, a station on New York's Metro North Harlem Line. So it's not impossible that something like that could be done. And I was thinking in Shrewsbury, where, where it crosses this line.
Is that where the train just slows down and you pop off?
Yeah, well. They uh. I think they do actually stop.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's, as you can see, that is not handicap accessible and um, uh. Oh, I could, I could. Uh, out on the long trail, when in the national forests, the, the outhouses have to be handicap accessible. I mean, that's just, that's Uncle Sam, just where it is. So the, the, the outhouses are almost as big as the shelters. They have ramps, they have turnarounds and yeah. Well, yeah, uh, but that's, that's, I digress. And just to give you the, the, the full scope, this is Rutland Station, which was open in nineteen ninety-nine. Very nice station. It's kind of sitting there in a sea of asphalt and uh, there has been talk about. Beautifying it a bit, but it's a nice station.
Where exactly is it?
Behind the Walmart. That whole Walmart parking lot was a rail yard and when the Rutland Railroad went bankrupt, they turned it into a shopping mall.
Yeah.
But it's behind that, yeah. So it's actually. What they call a, a spur and station where, so now the Ethan Allen that comes down from Burlington has to sort of back into it. And then go forward to go on down to New York, which is. Not, it's slower, but that's the way it is. So to get to where I'm asking you to participate here, uh, back in October, the uh. Telegraph did a very, very nice coverage uh, uh, about um, the rail plan and my saying there really ought to be. Um. Uh, you know, we could comment on the rail plan. And they provided a link to go straight to the state to provide those comments and over thirty comments went in. So of course. They, the, they had a, a Vermont Rail Council meeting and I follow those meetings in November and the state planners. Resengas is not practical and we just can't put it in the plan because it's not practical and it's, you know, and they said things like. This isn't a popularity contest, you know? And I'm kind of like, and so I wrote to them, I said, you asked comment.
Right.
How are you gonna gauge what interest there is unless you get comment? So anyway, I didn't get an answer. Okay, so. The next rail council meeting was in February when they released this plan and I have it on my computer while I'm working, you know, I just, and. Lo and behold, it was in the plan. It was third tier, but I said, you know, third tier is good enough. It's just like um, the town plan. You, you want to get a federal or state grant and they'll say, is it in your town plan? And it's the same thing with the rail plan. If there's an opportunity for funding, they're gonna say, is it in your plan? So that's all I'm asking for is to get it in the plan. So next slide, please. So that's what it is in the plan. It says investigative coordinated connection, rail bus, et cetera. So that's what it is in the plan. It says investigate a coordinated connection, rail bus, et cetera, at both Rutland and Bellows Falls to connect passengers between the Ethan Allen Express and the Vermonter to Killington, Ludlow, Ochemo and Chester. So um, well, why don't we just move on to the next slide? I'll show you what's what's perhaps, oh, yeah, so what's interesting is that the head of rail for the state, V Trans, their planner and three of the uh, uh, um, Vermont Rail um, council members that I know have all said, you've got to start with the bus first to demonstrate that you have the support. So I wanted to include in here to let you know, because you may never have heard that, is that Amtrak has their uh, they're called so-called throughway bus service. So this one's in California. And the next slide because this one is in uh, Wisconsin. And then next slide, Sue. This one's in North Carolina. Next slide, please. This one's in Ohio. So I just threw the slides in to say it's not a crazy idea that I've come up with, and I don't know if they would have an Amtrak conductor riding a a bus on a regular basis, but I found that picture online. I said, that's a cool picture. So I put it in there. Um,
Sure, that's a bus.
Yeah, well, I believe it's a bus. So this is the end of the slide. There is a uh, a Vermont Rail Plan update on March ten. I will be on vacation. I might monitor it from my phone, but I won't be there. But uh, I felt that the resolution that was circulated to you was pretty harmless. It just simply says, we like this. Please put it in the final plan. And I'm hoping that's what you're willing to do.
Okay.
Um, a throughway bus is a different bucket of money than, you know, stagecoats or something like that. And that's why I'm not sure it's gonna happen. Just saying it'd be great to have a conduit for that to happen if it were possible.
So
the transportation meeting, they did acknowledge Preston, but it was like, you know, you really don't have much hope. We'll put it in there, but you know.
This
We just wanted it.
The 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 meeting that Peter went to was the uh, Regional Commission's Transportation Advisory Council, because he represents Chester on that. And yes, they they had the three planners from the state present first and then they had me presented. And so, yeah, we got that again. It's like, you know, we just want you to be realistic here. And I said, you don't need to be realistic.
Aspirational.
That's right. So
Well, thank you, Preston, for that um, presentation. And uh, so I guess we have a resolution that um, we will vote for. It's the Town of Chester Select Board Resolution. Town of Chester Select Board expresses its support for draft preliminary third-tier location-specific recommendation ID number two five zero six. As proposed in the Vermont Rail Plan Midpoint Discussion Document dated February eleven, twenty twenty-five as follows. ID two five zero six, investigate a coordinated connection, rail bus, et cetera, both Rutland and Bellows Falls to connect passengers between Ethan Allen Express and the Vermonter to Killington, Ludlow slash Ochemo and Chester. Town of Chester Select Board provides its comment for the Vermont Rail Plan Update Public Meeting Number Two, scheduled for March ten, twenty twenty-five, and request that recommendation ID number two five zero six be included as a final element in the twenty twenty-five Vermont Rail Plan. This resolution is hereby adopted by the Select Board of the Town of Chester, Vermont on this fifth day of March, twenty twenty-five. So I will accept the motion to uh, sign this resolution.
No, go ahead, Ariana.
It's your first time. No, but it's your first time. Go for it. Spend eight years.
I'll make that motion.
So Ariana Janina says the motion and Ariana's second. Any discussion? Tim, you good with this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Preston.
So uh, all in favor of the resolution as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. So we will sign it. Send that. Okay, great.
So the other documents that are here were just for our benefit.
Just for your benefit.
It was kind of the last minute.
Yeah.
I just make, want to make sure I'm not skipping over something.
No, no, they were, they were doing, so we can't just give a resolution without it.
Yeah.
The context. So you've got two long documents that you may not want to look at. And then the slideshow was just a kind of a last minute decision. Yeah.
Okay.
The slideshow was great, the first one, too.
It was very good.
Yeah, absolutely. We are busy.
Okay, uh, next. Well, thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next on the agendas of Vermont, two hundred fiftieth resolution, and we have somebody from the Historical Society.
So what I was going to do is say, so they're looking also for a resolution to be signed.
Okay.
If Chester wants to form a committee or have a representative that works with the state's committee. I reached out to the Historical Society to see if they was interested in that. Um, they have a lot of interest in that. Um, so I asked them to send a representative tonight. Carla is here. Um, but they have been having discussions about this already and have an interest in turning with us.
Excellent.
Do you want to say?
You want to say? Yeah, come on up. Identify yourself and.
I'm Carla Westin and I'm a volunteer with the Chester Historical Society. Unfortunately, our officers were not available tonight, so you've got me instead. So we have been active for about two years, really active for two years, starting up again after COVID shutdown. That kind of took the wind out of the sails there. So we're up and running again. We have monthly meetings. We've been open summer after Sunday afternoons during the summers from one to three. We're also available to anybody that wants to come in and view our collection or work with us about perhaps genealogy um, and by appointment, and we're happy to meet them. Except for November through April, because there is no heat in the building currently and not yet. Um, so we're thankful that you allow us to come here and have our monthly meetings upstairs. We appreciate that. So we've been um, thinking about the actually um, seventeen uh, seventeen seventy-six anniversary, but the state of Vermont, through their historical society, contacted all societies here in the state and said they're going to spread it out over a two-year period, beginning this year and going into um, twenty twenty-seven. So they invited all historical societies to participate and put on some sort of an event in each individual town over this time period. So we've been working. Um, I'm sorry that Susan Goodfellow isn't here. If you don't know Susan, she is now the Secretary of the Historical Society, formerly served as a mayor in a small city over in New York State and has spearheaded many events in her prior locale. And she's really excited about this. So we're open to suggestions. If the Select Board would like to see something special, um, while Chester did have participation in the revolution, it was not, no fighting went on here. The closest it got was when General Stark marched his twelve hundred troops through Chester one day, then camped in Lunandery on their way to Bennington. That's about as close as we got to the action. But prior to the actual fighting of the revolution in seventeen seventy-four, a group of um, men, Chester citizens, were tired of the king butting his nose into their business and um, coming to Brown to collect taxes all the time. And so they met at a house up on High Street. And this group of men, which included Thomas Chandler, drafted Chester's own Declaration of Independence. So that was in October seventeen seventy-four. So that was pretty significant. Thomas Chandler was the clerk at the time. He's also credited with being one of the first um, residents here in Chester. He blazed a trail down in Charlestown's Fort Number Four, through Rostock, went to Springfield, actually marked a trail with his hatchet to get over here to the wilderness. And he was one of the very first people to settle, build a small log camp which he had to abandon and go back to Charlestown because it was late in the year and snow was coming, but he came back the following spring and stayed ever since, brought his family. He and his family had the first child born here. Um, so really the Chancellors should get all the credit for modern-day Chester. And he was the clerk of this group of men that drafted their Declaration of Independence. So I brought one for you, in case you haven't seen it. And a rendering, an artist's rendering of that occasion, which happened up on High Street. So we'd like to do something. We haven't decided on exactly what. We don't have a big budget. Um, the library would like to do something as well. And the new librarian apparently is very good at grant writing, just like Julie is. And um, so we are putting our heads together. Susan and the librarian are trying to come up with some sort of an event. And we'd like to incorporate all townspeople. We'd like to have it be a celebration of not only our country, but of our town, because we were here so early on. Um, and we'd like to have it be in uh, an event that knits together the community, get to know each other again after the COVID, after so many people moved here. We have a lot of new faces. Um, and one common thread is our love for our town, our love for our history. And we thought it would be a wonderful way to invite people to the Chester Historical Society Building and meet each other, celebrate. It will include food most likely and um, some of the ideas we have are to have each family come, if you'd like, bring some of your old pictures. We'd like to capture your history, your oral history, um, or your written history and put it away in our archives, because a hundred years from now, someone's going to enjoy looking at your pictures and reading your story. So those are, we've got lots of ideas and we definitely would like to work with you.
Wow.
Thank you.
That would be awesome.
So can the Select Board state that you would be the, you would be the committee that could be the liaison to the town and I'm not?
Sure. I think the library would like to be involved as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Carla.
So uh, we need to adopt this resolution.
Yeah. Yeah, and then I just emailed them the resolution and um, I'll let them know that with the library and the Historical Society and I'll give them a point of contact.
I'm not going to read the whole thing. You guys all have problems with it. So I will accept the um, motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved?
Peter Hutkins moved the
Second?
Ariana's made a second. Any further discussion or comments? Tim, you all good with it?
Looks great to me. I'm very excited about it.
All right, uh, all in favor of adopting the two hundred fiftieth uh, anniversary resolution for Town of Chester and the state of Vermont, signify by saying aye.
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 I always have it. Thank you. Thank you. So next on the agenda is new business and items for the next agenda. Anybody have anything that they'd like to discuss at our next meeting?
I think what we have coming up is a couple of the things that I remember is that uh, Hannah Dallas is going to be here for the forest plan. And uh, also a discussion of class three roads.
You'll have your appointments, your annual appointments.
Yes.
Class three and class four.
Class four, yes.
Yeah, I've got some literature on class four roads that I'll share with you, Julie, so you can get it out electronically. There are also some examples of res- of uh, policies from other towns and there's some other information there in general about class four roads. So it'll give us a jumping off point just to see, you know, what what other towns have done and some options that are out there.
Anything else?
I wanted to ask about the April second meeting. Uh, the April second meeting is Town Manager Conference and West Dock, April second and third. Um, I can come back that night uh, for the board meeting and then go back to West Dock on April one and April second. Um, or would you be, would you be willing to move that that meeting? The only thing that I have currently slated for the first meeting in April uh, would be we need to adopt a foam, a use of foam policy for the fire department and any traffic or modification, neither one of them need to be so the thought of either not having the first meeting or going on having one in the month or or if you want to keep it the second, you can do that. I can just drive that.
Um, do we need to decide tonight or?
I just need to know before April.
Okay.
Well, if we're going to move it, if we were contemplating moving it to either the first or the fourth, I could, if we, if we need to have the meeting and we're looking at moving it, I would be not available the week of the 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 middle week there, which is fine. Um, so we can either cancel it, we can look at the first or the fourth. Or you could move it to that week. But yeah, we'll tell Julie later.
Yeah, my my thought was that we discuss this at our next meetings and then if it turns out that there's something um, urgent, then we need to take care of the room with me. Otherwise, we could either skip that meeting or. Um, the other thing I was just thinking about, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it, but you just have nameplates for board members. I don't know, do you still have those kicking around somewhere? And is it worth putting it off here so that people aren't guessing who we are?
Follow the heart.
It would help. I mean, some, some people, when they start a meeting, they actually introduce everybody at the meeting, but with nameplates, it's kind of that would help.
I mean, they used to be on our cart, going, going with our car upstairs.
They're kicking around somewhere.
Well, we have new numbers now. I mean.
Right. Yeah.
And I'm happy to do that.
Um, we don't need to, but I just thought if we had, if that was a good, an idea that the rest of the board thought was.
I think it's a good idea. I think it would have helped a lot at town meeting, too.
Okay.
And while while I have uh, the floor for a second, Julie, I I don't think this is an agenda item, but you and I should probably, and maybe Lee, should get together and talk about next steps with uh, Dave Gertman, the attorney for the solar field deal. I would like to get that uh, moving as quickly as we can, because we're coming into the high production season.
Yep. So I don't know if you heard me at the very beginning in old business. So um, I had let everybody know that that they offered, uh, first of all, Greenbacker accepted the lower price.
I heard that.
And then, second of all, I talked, I um, emailed Dave Gertman. Him and I are having a conversation next week. He's going to start the purchase and sale agreement, which will then come to the board with him for discussion.
Okay, so why don't I just shoot you an email with some of the things that I have in my mind that I want to make sure he is on top of when he's going through that? And mainly it's about the transfer of the contracts and the recs and um, you know, those kind of details. Because if we, if those contracts don't easily transfer from Greenbacker to us, we might lose some revenue.
Okay, yep. Show me your, show me your list and, yeah.
Will do.
Thank you, Tim. Um, so anything else we need to discuss relative to new business on next agenda? If not, then I will uh, ask for a motion to go into executive session for the Town Manager Review and we're we're not everybody, right?
I don't know. You are done. I'm not in charge of my review.
Right, so uh,
Unfortunately, no.
So uh, motion.
Uh, motion to go in executive session.
Second?
So Peter and Ariana's motion in the second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we are now in executive session.
Well, one.